Scott.
Okay, I call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order Monday, January twenty third, two thousand and twenty-three at six o'clock P M. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brian Hampton.
Here.
Barb Mittman, Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Lampkin.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
And Sandy Eric.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a. Any non-council please vote. That is approved, takes us to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane. Question there. None, council please vote. It is approved, which takes us to the public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda and who actually may be taken. First item is a letter of recognition for Officer Matthew Salantano, I believe Sergeant Brandis, or I've got the director there too, whoever's taking it over.
Jerry. Good evening. Um. We had an incident and Chris will give you all the details on it. I touched a little bit on my initial report, but. It's really nice when we can recognize somebody who did something really well for our community. We've been in law enforcement, there's been a lot of criticism for a lot of different things, but you never or rarely ever hear anybody. Give somebody accolades for something that they did and did well, so. Chris made this recommendation. Everybody on my command staff felt that this was well worth it, and that's why we're here tonight. So I'll have Chris take over from here and then you can take it from there.
All right, so a synopsis of the events. On December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, at approximately one fifteen P M, Officer Salantano was requested assist a stranded motorist near six-fiftieth and two-fiftieth. With that slightly outside city limits, Officer Salantano received approval from a supervisor to leave the city to get to the motorist. Officer Salantano was requested to assist due to all the sheriff's office deputies being busy assisting other individuals. If you remember that day, the weather conditions were considered a blizzard with temperatures feeling like negative twenty-nine degrees. Wind speed was approximately twenty-four miles per hour, causing blowing wind and unpassable drifts. Story County's secondary roads had begun to pull their snow plows off the road due to the weather conditions and the drifts being drifting harder faster than they could clear them. The motorist Sherman Mercer, age seventy-nine, had his four-wheel drive pickup stuck in a drift. When Officer Salantano arrived, he parked short of the snow drift, which was about thirty to fifty yards from Sherman's vehicle, and walked to Sherman's location. Sherman believed he could traverse the distance to Officer Salantano's patrol car, and Officer Salantano said he would assist him to the patrol car. While walking to the patrol car, Sherman began to sink in the drift and fell to his knees. Officer Salantano physically assisted Sherman back to a standing position, and Sherman again fell. Seeing Sherman was without gloves, Officer Siff Salantano disregarded his own safety and provided his gloves to Sherman to keep him warm. Sherman attempted to clear the drift by crawling on snow until he eventually became weak and started laying on his back. Officer Salantano then physically pulled Sherman the remaining distance of the snow drift and assisted Sherman to the warmth of his patrol car. Sherman was experiencing difficulty breathing and tightness in his chest once at the patrol car. Officer Salantano notified medical units to come to his location. However, the weather conditions extended the response time. Officer Salantano made the decision to transport Sherman to Story County Medical Center using his patrol car to ensure immediate care was rendered. As a result of the event, Sherman was cleared of any life-threatening medical conditions and was able to be transported home later that day. Officer Salantano himself was evaluated for frostbite and exhaustion and then later released from the hospital. It's in my opinion that Officer Salantano had not responded in the manner he did. Sherman may not have had the same outcome as he did that day. Sherman himself has stated that he believes he would have died if not for the actions of Officer Salantano.
You have the video? They have the video?
Put the body camera and the car camera spliced together so you could see actually what took place, so. We're going to post this on our social media website. I think that community would like to see something like this, so. You saw the conditions. It's was pretty bad out there, so. I appreciate his efforts and what he did, and I would hope. Any police officer would do the same thing, so. Up to you now, Mayor.
Well, first, I'll say on behalf of the entire council, thank you. I think seeing that visually, it was really impactful, and I thank the department for putting that together. I think it's great to celebrate what our offices are doing and. I think you'd all agree it was pretty powerful to see that, so thank you for doing that and for saving a life that day. We have a nice plaque that they put together, so sure Marlus wants a photo op and.
You can take care of that.
Hey. Moving on in our public forum, we do have, I believe, Mark C. here to address the council this evening as well, so you can make your way there to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Thank. Well, things I had mentioned that I needed the D M I cable. I have one so that I can hook in up here.
We have a U S B. I thought we had one that. We have a U S B for. H D M I, sorry.
On the computer over here.
Well, I have I have it on my computer. There's a way that I can hook in from here. Um. And the other thing, I apologize. I spoke to Jordan late this afternoon. I've had about one hour to prepare. Um, I'm also gonna need your. This has got a different end. On it. No lock.
Sorry, Mark, your five minutes is up.
They're checking.
Okay, thanks. The other thing I need, if I could, just quickly, is your. Uh, guest. Sign on. For the internet.
Password?
Yeah, just a second. Ready?
Be our guest. It's all lowercase. Be our guest.
Oh, be our guest. Got it? That's it?
Yep, all lowercase.
B spelled out.
Yep.
There's spaces.
Space.
B E space, our space, yes.
Okay. B space, our space.
Yep.
Guest. Hey, we're there.
Would you be all right if we put it on a U or a flash drive and then suck it over here on our side? That way we can pull it up and run through it when you're ready.
What I'm doing is I've got some pictures and videos, multiple ones, and I'm willing to move. I don't know if any of those link up. Um. And. Just anywhere that I can hook up. I mean, I realize this is the podium. Um. Anywhere I can move to reach a cable. Is fine for me.
Everyone.
What that probably probably be easiest.
That I don't know, but. Because there's multiple, you know, there's multiple, there's some videos that I want to play. There's it's like my email account that I was gonna pull this stuff out of.
It's not like a. Right, so if you. Plug that in and pull up your thing, you should be able to drag everything over to the dip to this, and then we'll be able to put it all up.
Can I plug in over there?
Yeah.
And we'll just do. I think that's gonna be easier.
I was over there.
As we get this figured out, watching that video reminds me of.
He was gonna plug that computer in over there, if that's okay.
Reminds me of the first time I came to the city council and requested a. Something other than a town Victoria for a police car, hoping to get a four-wheel drive to be able to do those kind of things, so we've come a ways. And it also reminds me of a morning conversation when. And the importance of all the.
You know what?
Oh. That would work. Yeah. Yeah, that's probably easiest. So if he joins as a, if he even joins as an attendee, you can promote him to a panelist.
If he joins as an attendee, Aaron can promote him to a panelist.
And what is your email address?
Mark dot C. At Vanwall dot com.
Who we go.
So I'm gonna just add him, Aaron, so you don't have to shut down. I think I.
Josh.
Well.
Sure.
So we just need to get him into the meeting.
I've been sick at all.
Yeah.
So go ahead and put in zoom dot U S.
Never get sick. And Josh, Chris, Josh has a weaker immune system than I do. Never get whatever he has. Our whole house has had cold twice, never had it.
Nobody in the house is that. I don't know if you can get tested more than Samuel. Day they started it, you know, two years ago. He was like, they have pods and they get spoilers, so he had to be at home for three days.
Yeah.
Get tested, and every time he would, I would go with him. I'm gonna take you. I just love it. Sure, my brain poked. I'm gonna take you, I just love it. Sure, my brain poked.
Like drowning or okay.
I don't like things in my nose anyways, so like even nose spray, even like. I have to put this nose spray up every night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, appreciate your patience with that and I'll try to be quick to realize I'm on the consent. I guess. There've been several times I've thought about approaching the council in regard to the trunk sewer project and some different things that, in my opinion. Have gone on as this is progressed. And um, there I've had some concerns. I'm here tonight because of how the current. Construction is taking place. I'll just give some brief history. I get. Hopefully, what I share with you tonight encourages you to look a little deeper. At how this construction is currently going on and. Many of you know that I have experience of having worked for the city for twenty seven years and. I saw council members come, I saw council members go, I saw county employees come, I saw employees go, and I saw the different things that happened. I've seen the engineering firm that the city had. Um, be replaced by a full-time engineer. And I've seen them go back to having an engineer and I've seen him switch engineering firms. It's kind of like. You know, I remember probably the best example of this is. The cemetery, um, I remember there was discussion about. Purchasing new lawnmowers and council had this discussion that we shouldn't be buying these lawnmowers, we should contract. Um, and hire somebody to do that. And so that ultimately, that's what they did. And then as council turns over and they're looking at renewing these contracts, someone gets the idea that. We should buy some lawnmowers and do this ourselves, we can save some money. And the sad thing is that over time, these things often go back and forth and it doesn't allow. Everyone, the longevity, to really grasp. How this, how certain things go on over time. And. The trunk sewer project, Jordan arrived here and I've had. Uh, very good conversations with him. Uh, about this and he's seen, seemed genuinely concerned, genuinely cared to do things about some of this. But. Um, in the last week. There's things going on that I think um, really have sounded an alarm with me in regard to damages to my property. And it's time to speak up and make you aware of my concerns because I think. They expose you to. Potential damages. And I don't know how many, how much some of you know about it. So. I chose not to voluntarily agree to the offer that was brought forward. Um, by, is it J L G, I believe. And I went forward with the condemnation proceeding and I attended uh, that. Meeting and they increased the award to me. What I'd like to show you is what I discovered in the last week and I'm deeply, deeply concerned about some things that weren't done. And some things that are currently being done. And mainly it's with my, is right now is my concern over the loss of topsoil. That's occurring right now. And by bringing this to your attention now, I, if you choose to, I think you have an opportunity to get more involved. And to maybe ask some questions. And maybe direct some things to take place. That could improve how this project is going, in my opinion, right now. And uh, also for some of the other landowners that will be affected as the construction continues. So. Last week, if I could, I'm just gonna show you some videos and some pictures that I took. I drove by the, on two hundred and seventieth street. By my property where the construction's taking place. And I observed, uh, hang on. I don't know if there's any way that, how much bigger, uh, can I zoom in on that for you?
We'll be able to see it pretty decent on our screens too.
So this picture is taken off two hundred and seventieth street, looking north. And what I ask you to make note of. Is this hole in the ground right here? Can, can you see that where my cursor is?
Yes.
Okay. Then I ask you to look along the side of the edge here. And I think you can all see that that's high-quality black topsoil. Great organic material. Okay, this hole right there appeared to me to be, uh. Dug by maybe a mini excavator and it's about in line with where real water would transgress my property, go across my property. So I punched it. And I looked down in the hole. And here it is. Oops, excuse me, here. Couple holes. I don't know if you can zoom in on this, I'll play this video for you so that you get an idea of the scope. So, if you can watch, I'm gonna play this video, but do you see this area right here, light brown? That's where the clay layer starts and I zoomed in on it, so you can tell the difference between black organic dirt. And that area that I come up is about three feet. At that location. So clay at the bottom of the hole at the waterline, good black organic dirt, in my opinion and observation. Matching the top soil there and matching there. From my estimation. At that location, I've got close, I had close to six feet of black dirt, which is unusual. For a lot of the farms and it's much more than some of the farms closer to town had. If you notice the lay of my eighty, it's fairly flat. It's high CSR ground, it's quality dirt. Um, when you come further north towards Nevada, it's more rolling hills. And you'll observe that over time when it rains and farmers till ground. We lose topsoil every year in those kind of conditions and you lose more on those kinds of farms. And from what has shared with me is that. Some of the topsoil on the farms, both north and south. Of South S Avenue. Which would be the Nelson Farm to the north, the Kenny Lindstrom ground to the south. Had as little as ten inches of black topsoil. This is what first really concerned me. Or I guess made me realize that I had that depth of black dirt. So, um. A few days later, I went out there and took a look and they had opened the trench and they were working their way south and I believe the first. Manhole installation is about eight hundred feet north of two hundred and seventieth street. And what I observed was, um, first of all, not all of the topsoil was removed. And I had had some conversations and I was told. That the contractor was instructed or given the guidelines to only remove nine or ten inches of topsoil. And again, up at north, that's all the topsoil that was there. Well. When the excavator then starts digging the trench. It appeared that they attempted to pull more black dirt off and pile it, okay? And from day one, I've questioned the width of this easement. In fact, we were at a planning and zoning meeting and I said. Mike Roth here. Told the Planning and Zoning Commission that the total width of the easement was eighty feet and I corrected him and said, it's a hundred and twenty feet. It's forty permanent and eighty temporary. And he said that I was wrong and a subsequent meeting. I proved that I was right and he was wrong and he admitted that. That is still, in my opinion, insufficient. Width for some of this work to be taking place. I've done some work and looked into what Dakota Access did when they installed that pipeline. Your sewer line is approximately fifteen feet deep, I believe, on average. On my property, it looks like it ranges anywhere from a little over twelve to as deep as eighteen, possibly. So.
Hey Mark, I don't mean to be rude or anything, but this is, you're almost at like ten minutes now. If, if you've got information, I would love to see all the information you got to give us your concerns. And then that way we can get more well addressed than just an o- a public forum type presentation.
And Jordan, I just, I want to get enough to you that you take, consider taking action as early as tomorrow. So I'll show you a couple more pictures and I respect the time because I sat in.
Set a precedent where everybody thinks they can.
I completely understand. So let me speed through this, I won't take a whole lot more time. I think I've given you a fairly good uh, picture, somewhat of this, but. So. In a snapshot. They did not bore my ground and do test results. And when I asked about that, they said, well, you didn't, you refused access way back in, and I looked, it was way back in January of twenty twenty-two. My condemnation hearing was in October. And they had access to it. I've requested the test boring test results. And they were given to me and I have them, I could throw them up here, but they're not on my property. One of them, I would guess, might be in the gravel road south of me, because it says there's six inches of crushed rock is the top layer. And the other one, I believe, is possibly on the Ringenberg property all the way to the north. And I say, there was time, once they had access to my property and Jordan, I think you can confirm. Later on, once I knew that's for sure the route, because you guys changed this route, the route got changed three times, at least. And I questioned this guy because one of the changes was brought up by one of the landowners. When it came across the Ringenberg property, it went straight up across Bob Ringenberg's property, came to the fence, made a ninety-degree turn. To the east until it got over to my property, made a ninety-degree turn and followed my property all the way down. That made it no sense to me. Except to possibly be trying to avoid Ray Ringenberg's property, who's been very vocal about this project and in opposition. To, to it. Anyhow, Ringenbergs brought that up, his dad to. I assume the engineering firm or to someone. That why are you doing these two ninety-degree bends? Doesn't this stuff flow better in a straight line? And they changed it. And I don't know why it takes a farmer to point out this. And from what I understand, when they changed it and made it go directly. It shortened the length of the sewer line by six hundred feet. Saving you considerable amount of money. Mr. Ringenberg had the approximate amount of money per foot that it costs to put this in. What I'm getting at here with these few things, there's a lack of oversight, in my opinion. For this project and I, I'm quickly gonna go through this because. I'm gonna play, I, I'm not gonna go into the soil, uh. Soil test results, but I want you to see what's going on. Okay, this, this one's fairly important. This is what I really want you to see. So this is at about the eight hundred foot mark, eight hundred feet north. And if you can see this picture, for example, you'll see that. My black dirt, even though some of it's been removed, is still three feet deep, maybe close to four feet deep, but it's, it's right around three feet deep. When the excavators, because none, all of the topsoil was not removed and it wasn't specified to be removed by the contract. But because there weren't any soil borings on my property. To determine how thick the black dirt was. I'm not sure how you make a good judgment on how much soil to remove. So this is the compactor. And so when he's, once, if that dirt was scraped off, prior to opening the trench, there would be no loss of black dirt. Since the trench is open, all the work they do around the edge of the trench, black dirt is falling into the bottom of the trench and it's not being recovered. When the, when the excavator digs. And I'm losing a significant amount of black dirt to the bottom of the trench. Causing me damages to my property, lowering the quality. You'll see the black dirt coming off of here and then it rolls on clay and collects clay. This is nothing that I anticipated or expected. Or have encountered anyone involved with the construction that seems to care very much about. There's, so I want, there's clay, it's brown. What you saw at the south end of that property is not clay. There's a, a good layer of blue clay. One last thing here, since we're concerned about time. What I discovered this weekend. So this weekend I go out there. And this is the property line between Ringenberg and I. You can see black dirt. You see the dozer uh, marks. This is looking south onto my property, you can see the black dirt. This is looking north onto the Ringenberg property. That's my black dirt that was on my farm. That's been pushed by a dozer onto the neighboring farm. And stockpiled on top of other dirt. And what I didn't think about or realize, I would have never conceived or even thought. That the construction would not take into consideration the different farms and try to make sure that the dirt from one farm stayed on that farm. And didn't go on to another farm. You say black dirt is black dirt, but it's not. There's all kinds of soil types, there's all kinds of soil types on a particular farm. There are herbicides and chemicals that you apply to your crops. And if you put it on and you can't plant other crops. I encourage you to drive out there and I, I ask you to look into this. Because I feel my property is being damaged beyond what um, the compensation board awarded or book, or expected this to happen. And I've got one last thing, have any of you seen the pipe that they're installing? Has anybody looked at it close up? Anybody? No. So, from what I was told. The contractor. Was allowed to choose what pipe they use. I'd like to hand that around. In early meetings, this was. Said to be a. Twenty-year line. It's thirty inches in diameter. The sewer line that comes out of your house is probably either four inches or six inches and the current line, I believe, going into the plant is thirty inches. If I'm correct, I believe you can, are constructing a forty or fifty-year plant. And early on, I was told this is a twenty-year line. Besides what's happening now, in my opinion, it sounds and looks like to me, you're gonna have to come back across my property again. And dig it all up again and damage it further. You'll see that the actual line, lining inside where the sewage is gonna flow, it's paper thin, it's barely an eighth, uh, eighth of an inch. There are not, all kinds of broken pieces out there and if I drop this on the floor, I guarantee you it'll break. And I get. You know, I saw on the paper, I'll wrap up, the sewer rates are, sewer, water and sewer rates, average one is what, two hundred dollars a month? What are the residents? And the um, customers of the Nevada Water and Sewer Department gonna have to pay in the future? Because I don't think they've done a good job of planning ahead. It's in their, it's in their interest probably not to, because twenty years from now, when that different council's sitting in here. And that line's not big enough or fails. We can spend millions of dollars doing this all over again. So, I'm open to being educated further to something that I've missed or don't understand. Or view incorrectly. But I ask you as council members. Our federal and state government spends millions and millions of dollars a year to protect our soil.
Let's, let's wrap it up. I appreciate everything you're saying. Um, can you provide this material to us? Via an email or some links or something?
I can. And thank, I thank you for allowing me the additional time and for your patience. I hope I've kind of made my point.
But I'd sure like someone who is an engineer to take a look at these things and.
Last thing, Keith, I talked to, I was here when the city had an engineer. And I contacted an engineer about this project. Talked to him about it. They, in their mind, they feel that the line is probably undersized. And unless they knew the slope and a few other specifics, they couldn't really say for sure.
We're doing a lot of speculation, so let's, let's take a look at these things and we'll get the facts.
Thank you.
Please provide us with their concerns too, like a list of your concerns, so that we can. Get into each another anyway.
Thanks, and I, I had no intention to come here tonight, but if I waited till February thirteenth, which is your next meeting. Uh, and came in here a little more prepared and organized and a regular uh, agenda, they'll be across my property, it'll be done.
So we'll ask staff to take a look at that too. And see if there's anything that needs to be done in the meantime, but also to report back to council, any findings.
What I've asked. And the, the fastest thing that you could do to maybe change this is direct. Soil boring test to be done on my property. It has not been done without a baseline to tell how much black dirt is there. How can you be sure? That how much black dirt I got back and was reinstalled in my, replaced onto my property. There's, there's no baseline. And on the south end where I showed you that first video of the black dirt, that's already been filled in with clay, all the way up to about that far from the surface. They've already replaced at least four foot of black dirt with, with clay. Thank you.
If Jordan or Mike have anything they want to share with council tonight, you can. If not, I know it's my, there might be a lot new to you too, so you can report back next time, but. We'll move on one of the C P I D.
Uh, I, I think we would just need to wait until we get everything and talk with our attorneys and, and go from there and. Yeah, we just, we will need all the information before we can do anything about it.
Thank you. If you guys don't have soil board tests done, I will probably bear the cost to do that, possibly. So I hope that you do.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Mark. This time, I don't see anybody else to the public forums, we will close that, moved in new business, A, resolution number seventy-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Resolution approving agreement with consumers' energy to establish joint use of polls, resolution and agreement.
Who'd approve?
Brian. Saying no discussion, council please vote. That is approved, um, takes us to reports, starting with city administrator.
All right, good evening. So last couple of weeks, we've had quite a bit of meetings. We had a twenty-fourty vision, which was our quarterly meeting. And that was held with all of the groups that was present. Uh, conducting all of this, this information to, to present all of it. And so we, we met and it was a really good meeting. We, we're actually accomplishing a lot more than I expected in the two-year frame that. It has been approved and, and uh, working on, worked on, but. Uh, so moving along with those, we've had meetings with Joe and I have had meetings with Gen Pro, which is a solar company. And we're, what we're looking at is some of our poles over on Fossett Parkway are not in the greatest shape. So we're looking at what is the cheapest and most efficient way long-term to replace those and how we're going to go about that. So we do have a quote in, but we're, we're, uh, we still need to meet with them and go over the quote and discuss some of the things with them as well. Working on printers and copiers still, I feel like that's something that's been on the. List for several years with several city administrators, so it's. It's nice that we're getting that taken care of. Our contract does end in March, so we will be, we will have to do something in March. Uh, we're looking at several different kinds of printers, your Marco brand, which is. Uh, we're looking at several different kinds of printers, your Marco brand, which is Conica Minolta. Uh, I can't remember, Sharp, not Sharp, Kiasera. And then there's also several other companies that we're wo- working with as well. Uh, as you can see, the council chambers has been updated. We're still working on the AV side things. So the sound, uh, we've had some concerns with the sound and how it's getting dispersed out and it hasn't been the greatest for the most part, but uh, we're working through that and I think we have some solutions, but we are looking at other places as well, so we can find the best solution that fits our council chambers. Wastewater Treatment Plant is moving along, um, for some of the phases, we're still waiting to hear back for, from uh Boomerang on scheduling a time for our lift station. They did retain a third-party engineer, but we're still trying to figure out when that actually is going to be scheduled. They're looking at either this week or next week for that scheduling. Uh, the other thing is uh, some of the parts, the MCC, which is the control panel. And I, I'm not sure if we've had any updates since our meeting, but the last update is one of those control panels is set to be sixty weeks uh delayed uh from before. So it's kind of, kind of a, we're kind of trying to figure out a solution for that and see if we can come up with something uh for that, but we'll figure that out soon. Uh, I don't know if this was in Tim's M O, but we did talk about a dog park a little bit. That was part of the vision plan. And so it's exciting that we're undertaking more on that vision, but uh, obviously some of those things are contingent on other things, so we're still trying to talk about that and get the details. Navigator Pipeline did reach out to us and meet up with Ryan and I because we're, they're getting close to working through those plans and they wanted to know what type of permitting they needed from the city to, to do that. And then Bowtie Economist was um an event that A D C and Ames Chamber held, and it was basically about the economy and the future of the economy. And that was a very informative and fun presentation that I was able to be a part of. Other than that, I will accept any questions that you may have.
And moving on for reports, um, I'll keep mine fairly brief. Story County Emergency Management did have the budget hearing and adopted the budget um last week. Otherwise, there's just working to the league on keeping up with the legislative session. So the House did introduce their first uh bill for property tax reform. Um, there's some unintended consequences, particularly involving TIP and economic development. And so they're expecting potential changes still for the House bill. The Senate hasn't dropped a proposal yet, so the league's trying to be educational and informative at this point and making sure that it's a collaborative process. Um, and then the mayor's met with the supervisors last week to talk about all that, so that we're all, kind of all singing the same, same tune together in the county. So, any questions for me? Council reports? Okay, and we'll go back to staff.
I don't have a whole lot, just a regular maintenance operation of the wastewater treatment plant, lift station, remote flow basin. Uh, we did have some issues with a clarifier during the cold weather, iced up, caused some damage to the clarifier, so we had to drain it and have some emergency repairs taken care of. I'll be attending a maintenance conference the next two days. And then I also did some online bio solids report training. That's it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're just doing our routine stuff. Uh, we did do all the fleet maintenance last week and of course we're doing snow. Oh, any questions?
Sure, uh, I think it probably has more to do with the business owners pushing snow off their sidewalks into the curb line. Or anything we can do about that, because there's like days in a row.
There's been talk, there's been talk about that, and I think Aaron's kind of addressed that. I don't.
I don't know where else they're going to push it, but it's just, once it's pushed there, then you got, it, you gotta step through that then.
Yeah, for our side, yes, it would be easier because then it would be done and we don't have to keep going back.
Right.
You know, we were in the fight this morning because we knew that downtown, you know, people on Sunday aren't going to come in and, and do it. So we went in today, cleaned it up. Um, I, I guess we got to look at liability. We have to look at uh the manpower, the equipment to do it.
Um, yeah, I know that's not, you're not using a big red truck to do that. Uh, yeah.
Okay, what was I saying? You're really happy.
So.
So yes, it has been looked at.
Alright, I figured it as much, but I thought I better bring it up. No, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
From Spatinas? Okay, sounds good.
Um, real quick. The uh, if you guys haven't seen the website and our social media, we are posting for uh police officer testing and hiring. We'll be losing an officer in February. Um, so it was nice being full staff for a little bit. Uh, but, so we're going to get an early jump on it, so that way we can be hopefully ready for the August Academy. We won't be able to get everything in and done by the May Academy, so uh, it is what it is. Um, new Tahoe has been in for a little bit. Uh, we're nailing down some graphic uh for, for the vinyl, so hopefully that will be done here in the next week or so. Um, but yeah, anything else? We have an intern that started with us last week, so just doing some added entry, um, helping with uh some overnight contact stuff. Um, and then on a side note, non-police or city-related, um, probably noticed the ice rink out front, uh, shooting for a date in February to get crash out here, the Iowa Wild uh mascot and uh do an event. And uh Iowa or the Ames uh Ice Arena is going to rent us some skates, so hopefully we get some people out on the ice. Everybody's welcome to skate on the ice, free will.
As long as it's open.
As long as it's open. I bull floated the whole rink uh the other day when we had that slush, so. Um, so, so yeah, so um, I never worked, I did one year in uh high school concrete and said I'd never do it again, but here we are. And oh, but um, but yeah. Questions?
The bowl choose leaving?
What's that?
Can you divulge who's leaving?
Uh, Josie Bailey, um, she's took an opportunity down in the metro, so um, I don't know any details on, on why, that type of thing, so. But yeah, so I think it's a good opportunity for her. Um, but yeah, so we'll, we'll keep chugging along and shifts will be covered and calls will be answered.
Counsel? Sergeant?
Been doing a lot of uh continuing education uh this month, so have a little bit more coming up. Um, it's kind of that time of year for us to get that stuff in, so um, otherwise, just a lot of uh planning, spring and summer, things going on and working a lot with fieldhouse items on our end um, to get kind of our ducks in a row and eventually bring a few more things back to you. And I think in the next couple of weeks, you'll actually see some things start to go up in the air, out on site. So a lot of materials have come in and uh they seem to be uh well-prepared and ready to go. So any questions I can answer for you?
Thank you.
From peanut gallery? Aaron and Karen? Okay. I don't know what you've been working on, but.
I'm good. I've just been working on the backend of the website.
Anything from engineering? Larry?
This is Larry. I do not have anything.
I would too.
Okay. Um, so anything else for reports before we do the closed session?
Actually, yes, Tim, I just want to compliment the rec desk uh thing to sign up. I used that for the first time the other day and it was pretty spiffy.
Okay, then we do have a closed session pursuant to Iowa code or pursuant to authority found in Iowa code twenty-one point five one C to discuss strategy with counsel and matters that are presently in litigation or litigation is imminent where disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the government to body in that litigation.
For the closed session?
Second. Jason Dane? Counsel, please vote. Then Karen for the public, if they're wanting to stream the budget hearing, will it? Okay. Sounds good. So the budget hearing for the public will be zoomed to the regular meeting, Zoom, meeting that was already set up. Probably won't go back on Facebook, so they'll have to switch over to Zoom probably. Okay, okay. Sounds good. So go to the agenda and find the Zoom link. So we did vote, so that'll put us in a closed session, so the link will close and we will close doors.